We'd like to welcome everybody to the January twenty-eighth meeting of the New Bern Board of Alderman. Tonight, the prayer will be given by Alderman Kinsey.
Good afternoon. I'd like for Pastor Johnson to come up to the podium, please. From Ebenezer.
Thank you, Alderman Kinsey, to the mayor, and to the Aldermans, to the city manager, our clerk, and all the officials and audience present. Shall we prepare our hearts to prayer? We have others that's coming in, so we definitely want those on our side to be in with us as we go in prayer. I heard that the prophet's in First Chronicle, the fourteenth chapter, verse seven, says, "If my people which are called by my name shall just humble themselves and pray and seek my face, turn from their wicked ways, I will hear from heaven and heal their land and forgive their sins." And those that believe in the power of prayer, would you pray with us this evening? Our gracious, loving Father, the Maker and the Creator of all things, the giver of all good and perfect gifts, we come, meet, loyally, and humble before You. Almighty God, that sits high and looks low, never slumber nor sleep, but always watching over Your children twenty-four-seven. We come before You because You are our Provider, our great Supplier of all of our needs. And we have come in this place, gathered together on one accord, to address the concerns, the issues that face our city and our residents. And Lord, if ever we need Your guidance, Your wisdom, Your knowledge and understanding, we need it tonight. So we invite You to have Your way, Lord, within us. Remove every stumbling block that might be in the way to hinder You doing what You know is good and right for the health and the wealth of this great city, which we love so dearly. We thank You for the leadership that You have entrusted to act on matters that concern the citizens. And so, Lord, we pray that they will do what is good and right and pleasing in Your sight for what is good and right for all citizens of this great city. And Lord, we trust this entire meeting in Your hands, for You are God of order, You are God of peace, and You are God of love, and help us to be obedient unto You. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Mr. Pleasure Leach, flag of the country. Pleasure Leach, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, it's Calvin Rowe.
Alderman Bingle, here. Alderwoman Harris, present.
Alderman Astor, here.
Mayor Outlaw, here. Alderman Kinsey, here. Alderman Bell, present. Alderman Odom, here.
Are there any substitutions or deviations from the agenda tonight?
Not at this time, Mr. Mayor, but I'm expecting someone that will be coming in shortly, this city employee that's on duty, and at that time, I would like to recognize that person.
Okay. Would you like to give a second on that? That is your motion?
That is our motion.
Motion, seconded, and discussion. All three motions say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion carries. Consent agenda.
Make a motion that we accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion, seconded, to accept the consent agenda. Is there discussion? Yes, ma'am.
I would like to just point out to the public that item number five, just so people understand, because a lot of people were confused, we're not voting on anything, we haven't voted on anything. This is just allowing us to have a public hearing on February eleventh for the plan that the redevelopment is bringing to the board. That's it.
We have motion. Second, is there further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. The motion carries. Mr. Stevens, item number nine.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. Item number nine is a public hearing and consideration of the board to adopt an amendment to the land use ordinance regarding vape shops in C-three, C-three-H zones. Interest has been expressed in adding language to the code of ordinance to allow for vape shop use in C-three and C-three-H commercial districts. Proposed ordinance will add the definition of vape shops listed in the table of permissible uses and provide that such shops be allowed in those commercial districts. The proposed tobacco and vape shop use is consistent with the type of commercial uses already permitted within the C-three zoning. The Planning and Zoning Board considered this item at their December third meeting and unanimously approved it. And obviously, after the public hearing and you close it, the board is asked to consider adopting this ordinance. At this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Regieri for any additional comments he has regarding this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. City Manager summed it up perfectly. Back in October, this board gave the Planning and Zoning Board direction to amend our code of ordinances to create a use for tobacco and vape shops and place that use in our table of permissible uses. Paperwork in front of you today does just that, creates a definition for vape shops and electronic nicotine delivery systems. Those definitions will appear in section fifteen-fifteen of our code of our land use ordinance in the definition sections, and also vape shop will be added as a permissible use in the table of permissible uses only under those zoning districts that the city manager outlined, both Commercial Three and Commercial Three-H.
Okay. At this time, we're going to have an open public hearing. If the public would like to come forward, ask questions, make comments concerning this item, you more than welcome to come up.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second. Motion and second to close the public hearing. Do we have any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same.
Mayor, go ahead and make the motion. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that the board adopt the ordinance to amend the land use ordinance regarding vape shops in C-three slash C-three-H zones.
Second. Pleasure Alderman Bell, seconded by Alderman Kinsey. Is there discussion? Seeing now, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Alderman Bell.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Bingle.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number ten, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number ten is discussion of funding for plaque placements at Cedar Grove and Greenwood Cemeteries. As you recall, February two thousand fourteen, Bill Hand wrote an article in Sun Journal about several New Bern citizens whose remains were removed from Cedar Grove Cemetery in nineteen fourteen and relocated to Greenwood Cemetery. Subsequent to the article, a group of concerned citizens led by Ben Watford and Reverend Robert Johnson expressed concerns with city officials. The city contacted Dr. Charles Ewen, he's the Director of Department of Anthropology at Eastern Carolina University, and for his assistance, and on March fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, students from the ECU Bioarchology, I'm messing that one up, Laboratory, led by Dr. Ewen, excavated the burial vault of the remains of individuals who were removed from Cedar Grove Cemetery in nineteen fourteen. Upon excavation, only a few bones were present and were fractured, and they were in a co-mingled state at that time. Mr. Watford and Reverend Johnson made the recommendation, keep the remains in the current location of Greenwood Cemetery. Requested of the board to consider funding and approve the installed blondes plaques at each of the cemeteries to highlight the efforts to bring healing, dignity, honor, and respect to those individuals whose remains were removed and reinterred. There's a memo that's included in your packet, it's from Mr. Hughes. There's also, I think he's here to present to you what will be the plaque, and I think Reverend Johnson and also Ben Watford are here tonight, and they're going to say a few words as well. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Hughes.
Good evening, Mayor and Alderman. Reverend Johnson and Mr. Watford and I have been working on the plaque, and you have that information in your packet. The size of the plaque will be basically two by three feet in dimensions. We will place one at Cedar Grove Cemetery, a high-profile area at the main gate, and the other one will be where the remains are, at Greenwood Cemetery. And I'd like to ask Mr. Watford and Reverend Johnson to talk about ceremony that they'd like to have and to recognize this.
First, I want to say that I climbed Mount Everest tonight, coming in there. At eighty-eight years old, gentlemen, you're going to get there one of these days, and I will watch you climb those steps. But, you know, I really want to thank, first, the Board of Alderman for their cooperation in this matter. You were very comfortable with us and very, very good to us. You helped us out, you did what you had to do. But above all, I want to thank the Department of Recreation, Mr. Hughes. He's a dynamite person. We are lucky to have him in Parks and Recreation. I don't think anyone could have come up with a better solution to the problem than he did. Gentlemen, I want to again thank the Board of Alderman for your cooperation in this matter. I don't know what kind of people lived during nineteen fourteen. After I've gone through that many times, they were like you, but they were different from you. But at any rate, thank you very much.
To the mayor and to our fine city council, we just want to thank you for making historic, taking a historic step to bring some closure to a situation that had been left on the table over a hundred years. And we commend you for taking this step in bringing some healing, some dignity, and respect to those individuals that were removed from Cedar Grove to Greenwood. And in this celebration of this event, we planned a celebration of healing and dignity for these individuals. Hopefully, the end of this last Saturday in February, we plan to have an opening celebration where the public will be invited to come and to witness this awesome celebration. And we plan to have a dynamic speaker and solos to bless the event and the unveiling of both of the historical markers. And again, we just cannot thank Brother Foster Hughes for working with us and putting things in right perspective so that this celebration can be rewarding to our city, to the citizens that have gone on, and to those that presently live still yet with us and among us. So this year, again, it's a historical moment, and you need to be commended for doing what is right, to offer healing and dignity to the public. So you'll be hearing more from us once we hear back from the marker of individuals that will prepare this marker. And we do hope, if all goes well, that we will have it the last Saturday in February. And hopefully, we're looking at St. Peter's, A.M.-Zion Church, for the opening celebration, and then we will have a repass of the reception at Ebenezer Presbyterian Church after we come back from both cemeteries. Amen.
And so upon approval, we will order the plaques tomorrow, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Alderman Kinsey, you have a question?
Yes. I'd just like to tell Mr. Ben Watford and Reverend Johnson to thank you for all the hard work for something that very tragic happened, and to the day, we would never know. But now, we can see, and as this board, we've made a change to reach out, to be a part of something that we want to make right in this city and to move forward. And thank you again as well for just being a part of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to, I don't know, Mr. Hughes, if anyone, Pastor Johnson or Mr. Watford, has asked of you that maybe with the ceremony, that the refreshments or whatever could be sponsored by the city? I don't know if that's something that we, the board, would have to agree upon, but I just wanted to know if that would be something that we could include.
Yeah, I would think that would be appropriate, especially if something, isn't this sponsored by Parks and Rec?
Yes.
This would be sponsored by Parks and Rec.
So we can include it in the...
Yes.
Yeah, I just kind of wanted to piggyback off of what Alderman Kinsey said, you know, thank you to Bill Hand for bringing light to the situation, and even a more thanks to my favorite, Mr. Ben Watford and Reverend Johnson, for championing this situation that we had and it getting rectified. So I know that you give a lot of thanks to us, but we would not be able to do this if you didn't put the pressure on us and make sure that we corrected a wrong from years ago. So thank you so much for all your hard work, and please make sure you keep us updated in regards to when the ceremony will be so that we can also show our support in numbers and not just with numbers.
Amen. Thank you.
If nobody has any other questions, I would be very honored, as the Alderman of the First Ward, where both of these cemeteries reside, to make a motion that we fund the plaques and placement of the plaques at Cedar Grove and Greenwood Cemeteries, as well as include funds for a reception to be held at Ebenezer Baptist Church at the conclusion of the ceremony.
Second. Motion, seconded, is there discussion? Let's have a roll call, Miss, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Bell.
Yes.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Motion carries. Any other actions on this item? Let's go to item number eleven.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number eleven is discussion of transportation for the display of Vietnam Veteran Wall Memorial. As you recall, at our last meeting, George Halyuk with the American Legion Coast five thirty-nine, and the chairman of the committee who's responsible for bringing the Vietnam Veterans Traveling Wall to New Bern, requested that they be provided transportation during the event for those who need it, basically from the church, Temple Baptist Church, over to the park. The dates and times of the assistance that is needed from the city are March twenty-seventh from twelve noon till six P.M., March twenty-eighth from ten A.M. to eight P.M., and March twenty-ninth from ten A.M. to two P.M. The organizers are aware that the city buses are not handicap accessible. The cost to provide these in-kind services would total five hundred fifty-three dollars and ninety cent, which includes staff labor of four hundred sixty-eight dollars and forty cent and fuel of approximately eighty-five dollars and fifty cent. There's a memo that's included in your packet, so at this time, we leave the direction from the board to, since this is not a city-sponsored event, to provide this service to them.
I'd like to make a motion that for the veteran memorial wall to be brought here and to provide transportation, I'd like to make that motion that we can do that for them.
Second. Okay, you have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Seeing now, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion carries. Alderman Astor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as I mentioned to you earlier, I was waiting on one of our city employees to show up and so I could make a special announcement, and he is here, so if you don't mind, I would like to ask him to come forward. Steve, if you don't mind. First thing I'd like to say is I'm honored to have hired this young man about thirteen, fourteen years ago.
Yes, sir.
But what I want you to know about him is that Steve competed in the world's strongest firefighter competition in California. His competition was sponsored by Arnold Schwarzenegger, with the highlight of his event is having dinner at Mr. Schwarzenegger's home. The event included firefighters from all around the world, and Stephen was picked through his accomplishments in the fire service. Steve represented New Bern by wearing the New Bern Fire Department uniform. He carried the North Carolina flag during opening ceremonies, and he took second place in two out of the four events, and finished in third place, designating him one of New Bern firefighters as the third strongest firefighter in the world. Stephen, that's wonderful news, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
We appreciate you representing New Bern, and we hope that you go back next year and get first place. I understand you only missed it because you stumbled one time on one of the events.
A couple little mistakes, chief, yep. But first place was right there, so I hope I get to go back next year and bring world's strongest firefighter in New Bern, so it was a great experience.
That would be wonderful, and I really do appreciate you going out and representing New Bern.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Good evening. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Item number twelve, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number twelve is consideration of board to adopt a resolution approving a lease with Craven Community College for two oh nine First Street. A lease is proposed with Craven Community College for the city-owned property located at two oh nine First Street. The premises will be used as a small business center, workforce training, and maker space for entrepreneurs, and the proposed lease will expire on the fourteenth of May, twenty twenty-nine. In an amended and adopted lease dated September twelfth, two thousand seventeen, the city leased another portion of the property, two oh five First Street, to the college to be used as a workforce development center, which I will add, has been very successful to date. That site, commonly referred to as the Volt Center, Workforce Development Training Center, Craven Community College will be responsible for all costs associated with upfitting the space for use as a small business center, maker space for entrepreneurs, and any workforce training programs. There's a memo that's included in your packet from Amanda, our community economic development manager. There's also representatives from the community college here to answer any questions you may have.
I have a question.
I do, too.
Oh, go ahead, Alderman Harris.
Are you sure?
Early on, when we started this year, we discussed, as the board, that it would be set up to the degree that vendors of all types would be able to set up out there and do different, sell different things. So when does this change come about?
That is of another portion of the project, so this is for the maker space for entrepreneurs. So this is the building that's kind of directly behind the main workforce development training center that the college is currently operating, and includes some bay space that they're going to use for workforce training, and then also some office space for the small business center. This is separate from the existing open bays and kitchen commissary space that is also on the site.
But that's what it was agreed upon during the whole board. This right here is something away from the board that has been brought forward to us tonight to vote on, and I don't understand that. That's why I'm asking the question, you know, how would that change? Because the board voted, I mean, we all agreed that that's where it was going to go.
The original project had the workforce development training center, which the college has already leased that space. That was a part of the initial EDA grant. The initial EDA grant also had a maker space for entrepreneurs being present on the site, and then also a kitchen commissary space for food service entrepreneurs. So there are really kind of three components to that. So this is really the second component.
But like I'm saying, you know, sometime, it would be very nice if we would get a heads-up on some of these type things that, you know, normally the board agrees together. Seem like it would be brought back to us again, together, to actually, to look at that, to make a decision. That's just my concern.
I think what he's basically trying to say is that when we got this, we got it when it hit the agenda, and obviously, we have protocol where if we have questions, we go and ask what's going on with this. So I think that's what he's trying to say, is that it was news to him on the change, because when he received it is when he received it on when we got the agenda. So it's not necessarily, I'm not going to say it's on you, I'm just, I think that's what...
I just want to interject. I just want to be very clear, this is not a change in the scope of the project from what we originally voted on.
I understand.
The original vote was to provide a workforce development center, a maker space, and commissary. The maker space being the second component is what this agenda item is for you tonight to approve. There's an area that was set aside in the construction to create a maker space. That maker space is now going, the community college is saying, we want to be in that spot and provide this maker space as well as the additional workforce training, and put the small business unit there so that we can help facilitate a transition from being a maker into being a businessperson.
Right.
So it really is...
I understand that.
It is.
I understand what you're saying, but the word you just changed, that's all. That's all, the word you just changed.
So I'm familiar with Ms. Deborah with the small business from the college, so is that going to be transitioning, or will this be a second office?
It will be their main office of the small business center. So Deborah Cania is their executive director for that. So their offices will be located at that campus.
Awesome, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So it'll help support entrepreneurs that are attracted to the site.
Right, I use the small business a lot with my nonprofit, so I just, I didn't know it was going to be like a hub, or so they're going to be moving out of the college over here if it's approved?
Correct.
Okay.
That was it, I just wanted to know if that was the location.
I just have a comment, not necessarily a question. I think it's pretty obvious that the college is doing an outstanding job based on the number of people we see going through the Volt Center. I've had numerous comments from city leaders and other people who have gone through the Volt Center recently that had not seen it and are just amazed at the training programs they're seeing and the results of them. Also, too, I've had the opportunity to talk with Dr. Stats and Gary Boucher, who are deeply involved with workforce development and the importance and impact it has on our community, and they would like at some point to come before this board and make a presentation as to what plans they'd like to see to expand the Volt Center, to expand classes such as masonry. You know, New Bern was the hub for masons for many, many, many years. The finest masons in North Carolina came from New Bern. That program died out, we'd like to see it come back, and they are interested in expanding in that area. They'd also like to do an automotive program there. And again, these are, you know, mechanics, things that we need in our community. So if the board, I'd like to have some discussion. If it pleases the board, can we direct the city manager to have Dr. Stats and Gary Boucher come and do a presentation to us to tell us what they'd like to see happening there?
I don't have a problem with the presentation, but if, you know, if they can incorporate something in regards to the farmer's market, in regards to growing food and preparing it, because that's very important, I think if you can collaborate with something like that in the plan, I will definitely be able to support it, because we have a food desert in this area. I know we do have a farmer's market, but having another one is still okay, and teaching people how to grow and making the food, because that, like Mr. Kinsey was saying, that was the original thought that I was under the impression of, not with this, but overall, that eventually something like that was going to be put in place because of the fact of, you know, healthy, healthy living, growing the fruit, and teaching people how to cook with this food, and the entrepreneurship in regards to making the food and selling the food is very, still pivotal in this community as well. We do have a lot of chefs that, you know, are entrepreneurs and work from their homes and don't have a brick and mortar, and I would still love to see that roll out at the Volt Center as well. So if they do do a presentation, please incorporate that, or partner with another organization to incorporate that, because that's very important as well. I understand everything else, the masonry... I understand everything else, the masonry and the automotive, but still, you know, food, education. So, that's just my two cents.
Well, I thought that wasn't part of the initial plan, to incorporate the makers kitchen, and all of that would be included.
Right, I'm just reiterating.
Okay.
She was saying open up to the college to, you know, expand more.
The farmer's market is still part of the original plan, and it's still the direction that staff are going until the board tells us to go a different direction.
Well, I was just, you know, sharing the language, you know, that I understood the language, and seem like the other, all of them understood the language. That's all. It's all how you use words. You can change anything you want to change, it's how you use your words.
What do you need from us? Item number twelve.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving the lease with Craven Community College for 209 First Street.
Second.
Second. Motion second. Is there discussion? See, now let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number thirteen.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number thirteen is consideration of board to adopt a resolution approving the New Bern Area Metropolitan Planning Organizations 5303 Grant Contract. On behalf of the New Bern Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, the city has been identified as the Director of Shifting of Section 5303 Federal Transit Administration Urban Planning Funds. These funds are managed by NCDOT's Public Transportation Division. In order to receive these funds, the Board of Alderman must adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign this grant agreement with NCDOT. The total allocation for fiscal year nineteen twenty is $25,000, which reflects a federal and state share of $22,500 and a local share of $2,500. The local share will be provided by the jurisdiction participating in the New Bern Area MPO, and New Bern's portion of that will be $1,387, and you can see the remaining contributions from the other partners in the MPO in your packet. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Board have questions?
I do. Mayor, would you mind, can I address this question to Alderman Odom since he's our representative on the MPO? I never say no to money, especially when somebody will give it to us, but what, what will the funds actually go towards? It's not gonna be for transportation per se, or will it be to upgrade roads, or what, what will they use the money for?
Yeah, based off of the title, it's a Federal Transit Planning Fund, so it's, it's not an implementation. There are, as you can imagine, with the highway system around here, there are numerous projects and plans and thoughts about what could be done. This is just one of those typical grants that will allow you to put together a plan and hopefully down the road be able to implement it. I will tell you that the one thing I've learned since being on the support, the MPO board, it is a long-range planning board. It's not something to where we're gonna discuss a project this month in our meeting, and you're gonna see action on it in the next year or two. These are twenty, thirty, fifty-year plans that they put together. So, I just wanted to caution everyone, don't think that because we're gonna get this, if we get this grant, that, you know, next month we're gonna start to see some, some transportation activities around it, but it is a planning grant, and the proration, prateration that's built in there, I believe, Mark, is based off of the population, correct, of the various jurisdictions? And the only reason that the city of New Bern is our board's being asked to approve this is because the MPO sits within our organization. It could sit with Bridgestone or Craven County or somewhere else, and then those boards would have to take this action, but we're being asked because we're the, the home board of it.
Thank you.
So, so within this planning phase of this, would they include the cart systems with this? Transportation system with this?
That is.
I know, I know you said it was a long-term.
Yeah, the, the carts situation is a very complex one, that we probably should have somebody from carts maybe come make a presentation to our board sometime about how that operation works. Carts is 100% completely governed and managed by Craven County. The New Bern MPO has some interaction with them, obviously, because there's various municipalities as part of this group. We all talk amongst each other to make sure, hopefully, we're all on the same page, but as far as any control, the MPO has none over the cart system. There has been a lot of discussion amongst the MPO about carts and the need to improve some of the stops and the routes and things of that nature, and all of that communication would come from either our board if the city of New Bern felt like we wanted to see some specific changes to the county board, or the MPO has actually sent some recommendations to the county as well, but they don't have any governance over the cart system, unfortunately.
So, basically, these funds are just gonna go towards the study of operations to better improve the transportation systems?
Throughout the region, that's clear.
And to add, add real quickly to Alderman Odom's comments, the $1,387 the city contributes is our prater share based on our population. So, when we reach the 50,000 point in a metropolitan area, that's the reason why we went from a rural planning organization to a metropolitan planning organization, being that we have 30,000 residents here of the 50,000 roughly total residents, that's the reason why our share's a little bit more than the 50% of the $2,500 total. So, that's the reason why it's set up that way.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving the NBA MPO 5303 Grant Contract. Second. Motion and second, is there discussion? See, now let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number fourteen.
Mayor, item number fourteen is consideration of board to adopt a resolution approving a substantial amendment to the City of New Bern CBG FY sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen annual action plans. This substantial amendment is proposed for the fiscal year sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen to move unspent funds in housing rehabilitation, public service activities to a stormwater system improvement project in Duffy Field. This project is projected to assist with heavy rainfalls and et cetera in the Duffy Field area. Amendment to the plans require a public hearing, which was held at the board's last meeting on the fourteenth of January. There's a memo, memo that's included in your packet. There was much discussion at that public meeting, and we'll be happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Board have questions?
I have a question. On that pond and the walking trail, that's gonna increase more, more work for parks and rep to maintain. Have that been considered? Have, did it, did, I think his name is George Child, George and Jordan? Did they get a chance to see the size of the retaining pond that they're looking to build? I think they'll say it's like two or three of them. Do you think that would be big enough, small enough? I mean, based on being on the board for ten years, I, I think that the pond need to be bigger than what it is, you know, to, I mean, I'm not an engineer, but, you know, I lived here and seen many, many floods, and I, I, I think something needs, you know, I want to get their opinion on the size and what they're putting in. You know, is Jordan here tonight?
I, I don't know that Jordan is probably the most familiar with it. I'm sure Matt can probably come up and speak to that a little bit. Matt, some Jordan's water and sewer, and Matt handles the stormwater portions of it. I, I will say that, you know, we've gotta kind of take this thing with baby steps. I don't know that you're gonna design a pond to handle, you know, the entire drainage basin, and quite frankly, the thousand-acre basin that is Duffy Field, the, the Jack Smith Creek Wetland Project can't even handle all of the drainage on certain events. It really depends on what you wanna design it for. You could design it for a one-inch storm, you could design it for a six-inch storm, you could design it for, you know, the next flood that God sends that we need to build an ark for, but it's, you know, it really depends on what you want to design it for. I think this particular one, if I recall correctly, was a five- or six-inch storm or something.
Yeah, Mark Hittinell, excuse me, Mark Hittinell, for the, for the drainage area of this project, and to help me if I'm incorrect, but it's about a 66-acre drainage area, and it's sized to, for a, basically a five-inch rainfall. So, basically, the first five inches of rainfall were drained to this wetlands. Typical in the state of North Carolina, when we do stormwater ponds for commercial developments or residential developments, they design them to a one-and-a-half-inch rainfall over a 24-hour period. So, this is basically three times what the state requires with stormwater facility. So, for the size of the area that's draining to the wetlands, it's, it's oversized.
So, you're saying that it's larger than what it's supposed to be?
It is larger than what the state would require for a residential or commercial development with today's standards.
That's what I'm asking.
Yes, sir.
That's what I'm trying to understand.
Much, much larger, and also a five-to-six-inch storm would probably cover about every storm that we have other than an Irene where you get 10 or 13 inches of rain. But most storms would probably be managed by this, this stormwater device.
And who recommended that for us to go that size?
Basically, what we did is we started off with the, the Bill Street Pond area, and we looked at the area that drained to the Bill Street Pond, which is about 66 acres. So, you know, we sent it to a engineer up in Raleigh. They did some conceptual drawings and designs, and this is about what we felt like we could handle the size of this area, and as I said earlier, it's about three times the state recommendation.
So, from the engineer sending it back to us, and did our guy, George, get a chance to look at it? What was his opinion?
George and I were both involved in this during the initial phase when we sent it to the engineers in Raleigh, so yes, George, George has reviewed it, George has been a part of it as well as myself.
Yeah, because that's something that I have a great concern with, you know, with, is, is draining and flooding, and I like to have a clear understanding that when I vote on something that I'm doing the right thing, I'm making the right decision, that I have a clear understanding, the depth, the size of, you know, because we cannot measure how much water's gonna come down, how much water the wind's gonna blow in here. You know, it's like, they said, the last storm we had, Sand White did flood, but this storm here, it did flood, you know, the last September one. So, I'm just trying to, you know, get a understanding and the difference.
Yes, well, as Mark indicated, other than a hurricane or a major tropical storm, a five inches in a 24-hour period is, would probably cover just about every storm we'll see here during the course of a year.
I, I think I asked the elevation the last time. What was the elevation over there?
It's approximately somewhere neighborhood of elevation five.
Five, okay, that's what, that's what was said. And so, that five would be able to, not really hold off everything, but it would be able to take, would, tell me this here. Would you pump water out, or you just wait for the water to go in? I don't know, I'm just asking a question.
It would go in, it would go into the wetlands, it would make its way through the wetlands, and once it got to the Bill Street Pond and reached a certain elevation, it would then be pumped underneath the railway tracks, actually down towards the Jack Smith Creek Wetlands.
How many gallons would it be pumping?
I've gotta do some math on that one.
Because you normally tell me that, you know, it's like when we was over there, when the mayor and Alderman, I mean, Odom, we was over there at the, the one on, what is it, Simmons Street? He was telling us how many gallons that would pump.
Jack, Jack Smith Creek Wetlands a hold a capacity of approximately 5 million gallons of water. I could do some rough math and get you a good estimate for this one.
I'm just curious, you know.
I'd have to do some calculations to figure that out.
Okay. All right, well, thank you so very much.
Yes, sir.
First, my thing, one thing we did in this discussion, which I thought was applicable tonight, is Alderman Bingle and others, we've, we've all had discussions about mosquitoes in that area, and I certainly hope that the ability to site specifically, be able to, you know, our, we have a lot of citizens in New Bern that want us to use some type of insect site or whatever. We have others that don't want anything, so the best mitigation is to be able to control mosquitoes by proper drainage and possibly a fountain or something, I don't know, but of course, you and I discuss other natural means of abatement. So, again, I know there's a lot, the public's wanting to know how this is gonna process, but I would say one of the biggest benefits I'm looking for is abatement on mosquitoes in that area. Do you feel that way?
I, I can tell you the two biggest things to abate mosquitoes are moving water and aquatic plants that prevent mosquitoes by attracting dragonflies, and that's exactly what you're gonna get when you do a stormwater wetlands project.
Well, I'm looking forward to this myself, because I think it'll be quite a health improvement for the citizens in that area.
Matt, let me ask you a question. You stated that this water would drain towards the Bill Street Pond and the pump is there, and then eventually be pumped under the tracks. Is there any plans in the future, any mitigation plans for the Bill Street Pond? Do you know of any, are we gonna put generators, bigger pumps, and bigger pipes or anything?
As, as a part of, I mean, again, can you correct me if I'm wrong? If, as a part of this, we will increase the size of the pumps, and we will include generators so that we get to a hurricane Florence or Dorian like we've had in the past. You get the power outage, you don't have that pump failure as we've had in the past.
Good, okay.
I know one other question the public would have, I'd like an answer for them, for the public, is your process, I know with lift stations and other things, they're, they're monthly or daily monitored. To assure the public that these pumps are working, and to add to what Alderman Astor's referring to, how often are you, are you monitoring the, the present pumps, and how often do you plan on monitoring the future pumps?
The public certainly, at least at a minimum, goes through a monthly preventive maintenance check, and they're actually operated and ran on a monthly basis. But one of the things we have at the Jack Smith Creek Wetlands, they do run a little bit more frequently just because the water's consistently moving, but as far as the East Rose Pump Station, at least monthly for their preventive maintenance checks.
One other question.
Go ahead, I think Alderman Odom will be right back to you.
You go ahead.
One other question, back to what the mayor was saying to piggyback off on. Parts for the pump, are they very easy to come by, and how long would it take us to, to receive those?
We've got some suppliers here locally that we get parts pumped for, but we typically don't have problems where we're actually replacing parts. It's, it's really your preventive maintenance, you're making sure they're oiled, make sure they're fueled up, make sure everything's greased properly. Usually when a pump goes, the pump goes, but that's not, I, I think we've had one pump failure with a stormwater facility since I've been in the director.
Where was that at?
It was the East Rose Pump Station. We did have some mechanical problems with one of the pumps.
How long was that out?
Probably three years ago.
How long was it out, though?
I've had to go back and look at some record. How long was it out?
Yeah, I thought you said three years.
No, three years ago is when it, it happened. It probably was out of commission for, you know, 30 to 60 days while we got a part and had a replacement.
It's just, I was, you know, asked the same question, so I was just trying to make sure that, you know, I've covered the base there.
I think what the, Alderman, Kenzie might be referring to, I know a co-city water well pumps and things, I know you have redundancy, and I know you have additional pumps that if something goes out, boom, you got something to back it up. I think the board, from what we're hearing from the public, I think we all want to make sure that in the case of a pump going out, your answer just now, Alderman Kenzie, was that if the pump went out the 20th day or the first day of your monthly inspection, that could affect the overall drainage. So, I think we're, as a board, hearing from the public, we're looking for more increased monitoring, possible alternative backup, both the, your generators or redundancy in a, some type of a flip valve in case one pump is, is not running, we've got another one.
And currently, that's exactly what we have. We've actually got two pumps.
Okay.
There's two pumps, if one's not working, the other one is working. The only time you'll actually see or need both pumps working at the same time is if you run into a hurricane Irene situation, so there is redundancy with two pumps at each one of the locations.
Matt, a couple of questions as far as the permitting process goes to get this project going. Is it gonna require the Army Corps of Engineers, or what level of involvement will it require from outside entity?
At this point, I'm not sure. I don't know that, I'm not sure if it will require any. We're not, we're not in a location close to the water where it would require any 404 Army Corps of Engineers permitting, so we'll work with engineers in Raleigh, but at, at this point, I'm not sure if it requires any.
As far as timing goes, what, what are we looking at as far as when we're actually see this project happen?
Mayor, you have an idea?
We'll start. Once the substantial amendment, if approved, we'll begin the process immediately to secure the A and E services, to begin the process and do the further analysis needed to know what kind of permitting and kind of timeline we're looking at.
So, probably not before hurricane season this year. And then my last question, as far as the, the budget for what's all included, the, the overburden and all the extra dirt that's gonna be pulled out of there, do we have all that covered? Do we know where it's going? Do we know where it's going and what it's gonna be used for?
Um, the project itself is broken out into phases, so this is really the phase one of it to make the improvements to the Biddle Street Pond, um, pumps and pipes. Um, there will be future phases of this and we're actively pursuing funding sources for that through FEMA grants and other, um, clean water management, um, trust fund grants and things like that. So, we're actively, um, pursuing other grant opportunities to fully fund the long range goals of the project.
So, what does the long range go of the project then? And so, how long is it gonna take to get this money to complete the project? So, when is the project date completed, will be?
Um, undetermined at this point in time. It'll be based on funding, it's about a two million dollar project overall. Um, but we are in the process of applying for other grant sources, um, as we speak. So, um, this will help in already having pieces of it funded to make it more attractive to those other granting sources.
So, everything that we discussed at, at the last meeting that you presented, um, we approved this, we do the, the first step, like you said, implementing for Biddle, Biddle Street Pond, but the overall project is gonna be two million dollars and we don't have an estimated time of completion because we're looking for funding.
Correct, yes.
Interesting, okay, thank you.
Okay, item number fourteen, one of the boards, yes, ma'am.
Do you want to adopt the resolution? Make a motion to?
If you want to.
Uh, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution approval, a substantial amendment to the City of New Bern, C, D, B, G, fiscal year sixteen, seventeen and eighteen annual action plans.
Second.
Motion second, is there further discussion? See, and now let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number fifteen.
Thank you, Mayor, item number fifteen is consideration of the board to adopt a resolution initiating the upset bid process for three one eight Crescent Street. Reuben Hassel Jr. has made an offer to purchase three eighteen Crescent Street for three thousand eight hundred dollars. He owns the adjacent property and is interested in extending his loan. Uh, the tax value of the vacant point zero eight acre lot is seven thousand six hundred dollars. The offer represents fifty percent of the value. This property was acquired jointly by the city and the county through tax foreclosure in March of two thousand thirteen. The property is sold for the initial offer, the county will receive approximately one thousand six hundred ninety-eight dollars and seventy-eight cent. Of the proceeds, the city will receive approximately two thousand one hundred and one dollar and twenty-two cent. Uh, these estimates take into account the cost of publishing and legal advertisement. There's a memo that's been included in your packet from Ms. Blanco. We're happy to answer any questions.
Board have questions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution initiating the upset bid process for three eighteen Crescent Street.
Second.
Motion second, is there discussion? See, and now let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number sixteen.
Thank you, Mayor, item number sixteen is resolution authorizing the addition of a streetlight on Midget Avenue. Linda Simmons of three oh three Midget Avenue requested additional street lighting, uh, between Karen and Powell Streets. The Department of Public Utilities evaluated the area and determined that the current lighting does not meet the city's light standard, recommended the addition of a light. Uh, the installation of this light will cost six hundred sixty-six dollars and forty-one cent. The monthly utility charge for the service will be eight dollars and forty-four cent. This money will come out of the Public Works budget, uh, for the monthly charge. Um, the Director of Public Utilities is attached along with any other, uh, supporting documentation. Uh, there's a memo.
I'd like to make a motion to consider adopting a resolution authorizing streetlights on Midget Avenue.
Second.
Motion and second, is there discussion? See, and now let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number seventeen.
Thank you, Mayor, item number seventeen is resolution authorizing the addition of a streetlight on New Bern Avenue. Mary Kuntz at twenty-six oh nine New Bern Avenue has requested additional street lighting near, uh, New Bern Avenue between Wake and Sycamore Streets. The Department of Public Utilities has evaluated the area. It is determined to not meet the city's light standard and recommended a, an addition of one light. Installation of the light, uh, like the last one, is for six hundred sixty-six dollars and forty-one cent at a monthly charge of eight dollars and forty-four cent towards Public Works. Happy to answer any questions.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution authorizing the addition of a streetlight on New Bern Ave.
Second.
Motion and second, is there discussion? See, and now let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number eighteen.
Thank you, Mayor, item number eighteen is resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with the Craven County Board of Commissioners for the two thousand nineteen Burn Justice Assistance Grant. Uh, New Bern Police Department applied for and received eleven thousand four hundred eighty-eight dollars in grant funds from fiscal year two thousand nineteen Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, uh, which requires no match. Uh, the grant was a joint application with Craven County and the Craven County Commissioners approved this memorandum of understanding at its January sixth, two thousand twenty meeting regarding the use of the funds. Uh, these funds will be utilized to purchase equipment to assist the Coastal Narcotics Enforcement Team with investigating illegal drug trafficking. Happy to answer any questions.
Board have questions?
Not, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion we adopt a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with the Craven County Board of Commissioners for the two thousand nineteen Burn Justice Assistant Grant.
Second. Motion and second, is there discussion? See, and now let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number nineteen.
Thank you, Mayor, item number nineteen is a budget ordinance amendment for the grant funds, um, that, uh, we just talked about, the two thousand nineteen Edward Byrne Memorial Grant, uh, in eleven thousand four hundred eighty-eight dollars. Um, this budget ordinance amendment recognizes received the grant and establishes necessary budget. Happy to answer questions.
Board have questions?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a budget ordinance, ordinance for the grant funds.
Second.
Motion and second, is there discussion? See, and now let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries appointments, Alderman?
None.
Alderwoman Harris?
None.
None, sir.
None, sir.
None.
No, sir.
Okay. This time, attorneys report.
Nothing reported tonight, Mayor.
City managers report.
I just wrote two quick items, um, uh, and I'm, I may be stealing some thunder of the fire chief, former fire chief up there, I don't know. We recognize one, uh, we recognize one employee tonight, but I wanted to make sure and recognize another one. Yesterday, he received some recognition, but, uh, I wanted to announce that Bobby Boyd, uh, Chief Boyd, uh, was awarded the Eastern North Carolina Fire Chief of the Year. Uh, so I think he deserves some applause and recognition as well.
You did steal my thunder, that's odd.
Well, he's my employee and, uh...
I understand that feeling. I hired him, though.
What's that?
I hired him.
Very true. Um, uh, also, the other, I just wanna remind the board and the public of our February seventh, uh, retreat, uh, board retreat, uh, we will be discussing various topics. I think we'll probably stage this thing very much like we did last year and allow the department heads to come in and, uh, discuss with you, uh, their goals and initiatives of their department. Uh, each one of them will have a, a lot of amount of time where they can present to y'all and then if y'all wanna ask any specific questions or bring up any specific topics, you're more than welcome to do so. If you have any other topics, uh, I would appreciate, uh, knowing what those are now so that I can spend a little time in researching those. But other than that, uh, I, I, I heard from the board pretty much that that's, that last year's was, uh, pretty successful and y'all liked the way that worked, so that was our plan for this year. But, uh, we're happy to, uh, to discuss any other items at, at the board's pleasure.
And that will be here, uh, starting at one P M., correct?
Uh, it's, it's actually Development Services, yes, ma'am. Development Services, one P M. until, um, and then we also set aside Saturday, uh, if we need it. Uh, but, uh, um, that's pretty much what the plan is at this time.
Anything else?
No, sir, that's it.
Okay, it's time on our new business. So, we'd like to start out by welcoming, um, Alderman Bernard White to our meeting. Bernard, good to see you. Um, Commissioner Johnny Sampson and, and Reverend Ethel Sampson and, uh, solid back of the room there, Public Works Director Danny Maddes. Danny, good to see you and I know you're gonna be helping us out quite a bit in the future, so, uh, welcome to everybody. Um, I did wanna mention to, to the city, on behalf of the board, if, if it pleases the board, that, um, the long process of, uh, demolition of, of the Trent Court units, um, anything that the, um, city can do to help expedite that, I think the major things will be, um, HPC approval of that process. Um, and I'm not in any way trying to usurp the normal duties of the House Authority, but I think, um, on my, on my two cents where time is of the essence, that we, that, that process starts. So, anything we can do to assist the House Authority, I would certainly like to see that. If I'm speaking out of term for any of the Alderman, uh, please correct me.
I, I attended the meeting last Monday, 'cause I attend the monthly meetings. And the report is that the process is still ongoing. Um, it was at the State Historic Preservation Office for a review because of the medallions in, um, in the buildings, they're historical assets, they wanna understand what they're gonna do with them, what's gonna happen. But I reminded them that they also had to go through the HPC process since it, since it is in a historic district and, uh, they were gonna have to file that paperwork and do that as well. Um, my estimation, based on what I heard, if it's done in six months, that'll be great. But, um, that's, that's about where they're at. They are in the process of hiring a new executive director, which Mr. Blaney is retiring. He announced his retirement and I expect any day now, they will announce. I've not been privy to who or what, but they, they have interviewed, went into closed session to determine what their next steps were, so, um, they should be hiring somebody new there.
Yeah, we appreciate you attending those meetings and keeping us all aware of what's going on. Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
Did you have any other items?
I do not, thank you, sir.
Okay, Alderman Harris?
I think Mr. Kinsey has something to say.
Come right down.
Oh, I didn't know if it was implicated to what you were saying.
We are talking, okay.
Okay.
Go right here.
Um, City Manager, Mr. Stevens?
Uh huh.
Um, we heard wonderful news about FEMA, thirty-two million. I was wondering if we had any updates about Stanley White?
Uh, sure, uh, just real quick as an update on the FEMA reimbursements, um, things are moving along rather rapidly now after a lot of very, very long, arduous work. Um, as you just mentioned, thirty-two million dollars, uh, roughly were, uh, approved and, and, and that will be, it, it's not that, hey, we're getting thirty-two million dollars, we still have to perform the work, we still have to re, we have to submit all of that, have everything validated. And that's just the cat A work, the cat D work, which is the permanent measures. We're in the process, as you will recall, y'all approved the contract just recently for us to do that work. They're out there in the midst of doing that now. As we get each basin done, we're submitting those, they set those up as ten different projects 'cause we have ten different basins that we're evaluating. So, of those ten basins, when we finish one, we're submitting that work so that it can be approved, get those rolling. But, um, you know, I'm happy to say that, 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 that the City of New Bern is going to be in a lot better shape after thirty-two million dollars worth of ditch work and ditch clearing out and mucking out of ditches throughout our entire city, uh, after we get all this completed. Um, additionally, um, we, uh, have now posted, I'm sorry about that, posted, uh, a requirement. Uh, FEMA requires us to, to post a public notice, um, for comments to FEMA, not to us, but to FEMA, um, regarding the, uh, allocation of funds for Stanley White Recreation Center. We have done so, it's on our website, welcome people to go to that. We've also posted it, uh, as a, as a hard copy downstairs, uh, as you walk in the door of City Hall and also at Stanley White Recreation Center on the front door, if anybody wishes to go by and read the hard copy version of it. Uh, but I encourage people to go look at the, um, um, the, the website for ease of use and it's posted there. Uh, essentially, um, a little over eight million dollar, uh, is potentially coming in funding for Stanley White Recreation Center. Uh, this is one of the final steps that we are required to do. There's a thirty day period in which we must wait for those comments, for FEMA to receive those final comments. It's kind of a final notice, I guess, if you wanna say that. Um, and then at that point, um, uh, there may be a step or two regarding that afterwards, but essentially, um, they are, um, agreeing to, uh, the assessment that we need to, to demolish and reconstruct Stanley White, uh, because of the extent of the damage, uh, that was received at that particular location. So, um, happy to answer any other questions you might have regarding that.
Okay, so, thank you, thank you for the information, thank you to the staff and everybody for all the hard work. Um, essentially, we're gonna claim that it's gonna be approved and will be granted this money. What would be the next process for us, once we hear from FEMA? Is that when we come together as a board to start making a decision with, uh, the development team in regards to how we want to implement the next stages with Stanley White?
So, um, obviously, the, the board made a, a, I guess, a, a decision to move forward with locating it back at, at that particular location, if FEMA allows, um, it to do so and/or if an engineer says that it, it's feasible to put it there. Um, I will say, in that public notice, they gave basically three options. The do nothing option, which basically means don't do anything and it's probably gonna happen again. Option two is you can rebuild at that particular site, but keep in mind, it's very low and there's likelihood that it will happen again. Or three, relocate it. Uh, they also talked about some of the negative impacts of the community, that you, you, if you wanna relocate it, you should consider, you know, s- something within the community or whatever. So, once again, that's the board's decision, the board can choose what they wanna do. Uh, the other thing that we'll need to start kinda moving on, uh, now that we kind of, or when we get confirmation that we're receiving those funds, is to start, and expeditiously as quickly as we can, start on the engineering and architectural services. However, I will say, oftentimes, the engineering services and the architectural services are based upon where it's gonna be located, what's it gonna be standing on, what kind of foundations do you need to build based on, you know, what kind of soils you're gonna be dealing with. So, we need to keep all of that in mind whenever we're moving forward. Um, and some of those things are kinda in the works now as far as trying to determine, okay, what kind of conditions are we dealing with? Right. Down there at, uh, um, where Stanley White's located at now. Um, but essentially, that would be your, kinda your next steps and that would be some discussions with the board. Um, I am sure that, um, Foster would probably like to engage the community.
Yes.
Uh, I think engaging the community as to what kind of recreation services should we provide in a new recreation center because recreation services that we were providing in nineteen seventy-something, whenever, uh, Stanley White was built, is completely different from the recreation services that are being provided now in two thousand twenty. So, all of those things should probably be something that we need to be considering and moving forward with. And now that we kinda have a little bit of a light at the end of the tunnel, I think it's probably a good idea for us at least to start moving forward with, uh, engaging those opportunities for public input.
I agree, I agree, definitely. Thank you so much for that update, I appreciate it and that's all I have, Mayor.
Mark, let me ask you a question, should, would it be smart for us to go ahead and try to do some soil borings in that location?
It's already in the works.
Good, okay, thank you.
What's your guess?
Well, I had something to announce Bobby Boyd stuff and I had, I was gonna talk about the ditch project, uh, but you, you took that away from me. But I would like, I would like to ask about the school resource officer before anybody else picks it up and, uh, and see if it's, it's, it's budget time. I mean, maybe we, it's time for us to reach out to the school board and about our concerns with the, uh, prices of these school resource officers in the city having to fund them.
I know that, uh, Police Chief Summers, uh, reaches out and discusses that with them each and every year. Uh, it's very interesting that, um, a portion of our school resource officers are being funded at a completely different level than what some of the other ones are, even though those school resource officers are providing the same service for the same amount of time. Uh, I think it's six, thirty-nine thousand and forty-nine thousand are the two different, uh, uh, models. The forty-nine thousand was the one that this board approved for, I think it was two or three additional ones. I think we have six other ones, if I'm not mistaken, Chief, you may wanna comment on these real quickly. But I agree with you essentially is what you're saying in that, um, uh, it is budget season for the county just like it is for us and for the school system who submits it to the county.
for the school system who submits it to the county, so it's probably advisable for us at this time, if we wish to do that, you know, make that, make that request.
Yes, the original contracts that we've been operating under for years is at roughly thirty-nine thousand per officer, and that's for a twelve-month period, and the new, the most recent one where we added two, is for forty-nine thousand, but that was a two-year contract, and the school system is trying to break that up into six-month increments, and that's what we're waiting on at this point.
Okay, but no additional funding so far from?
I haven't been personally told, but I've heard that they have got, received a grant for three additional, but they're probably focusing on more of the rural areas out in the county where it's a little more difficult for officers to get to in, as far as timely, in a timely manner.
Okay, so, can we ask the city manager to reach out to them and express our concerns and see what their plan would be?
Am I mistaken, or was this on our agenda item a while back, and then it got pulled and it never got brought back before?
We had it as a pre-agenda item at that time, and I think Chief noticed that, I think that actually at the Craven County Schools level, they have requested it.
Yes, we have had the contracts submitted to us a couple times, and each time we noticed that there were some errors in it, sent it back, and the last one, we sent back and they're working on it.
Are we, are we in a valid contract with them right now?
No, but we are being paid.
So, I'll just share with the rest of the board, when we met with the county and this issue came up, the first time we had that meeting, they advised us that we needed to speak with the school board, not the county board about this, so if we want to have some discussion, it needs to be with the school board, not the county board.
We could possibly the chair of the school board to come to our retreat, I think that would be a good opportunity to be able to speak to them.
Certainly invited.
What, what's the, for me, what's the major concern? Is it the fact that we're partially funding this and no one else is?
So, essentially, the cost to provide service for these particular officers, oftentimes, for the amount of time that they're in there exceeds what we're actually being reimbursed, so there becomes a policymaking decision of what's the value of having our officers in the school versus ultimately, I guess the sheriff would be responsible for providing that at county level if we're not doing it, so most of the schools within the city limits, if not all the schools in city limits, we have our officers in. There's value to that in having the entail, being that we're dealing with local folks and so forth and so on, so that's really the crux of the matter is, is the cost for the salary, the benefits, the car, the computer, the radio, everything else that we have that equip a school resource officer, just like we would with any other officer, because during the times when they're not a school resource officer, they're actually providing service the other three months as a police officer on the beat in the streets doing that kind of stuff, so, go ahead.
I do want to add, all schools in the city don't have a school resource officer, but any school in the city that has a school resource officer is a city police officer.
Okay, so, you're saying the ones that are in city limits do have, or they don't?
All do not have, but any, any school that has one is a city officer.
Okay, yeah, so that would definitely be my main concern, just as an individual on the board, I know that there's some back and forth, and like I stated before, I feel like as the board of Alderman, in the fact that we have schools within the cities, the city limits, if we can at least make sure that if we're gonna move forward and have a conversation, that the ones that are located in the city, we need to make sure that there's a resource officer in the school and that it's being funded, and we figure out some sort of conversation between the school board and us for the simple fact that if we were not to pay for it and they put in the sheriffs, they're still gonna call the chief or the police officers to file in a report which is redundant, so it makes more sense for us to have our city officers in there, not to discredit anything that the county is doing, but we do need to have this conversation.
And just keep in mind that school resource officers that they do provide are typically grant-funded from the state level.
I understand.
So, therefore, some of those, you know, obviously, if they're gonna provide some and they don't have grants to support them, they're gonna have to come up with that money or we're gonna have to figure whatever.
Right, and I know last time we were debating and we went ahead and took the, that would be poor choice of words, but we went ahead and, you know, agreed to cover it because that's the right thing to do, but I do feel if there's someone that can come to the retreat that have this conversation, because it's very serious and very important, and we want to be proactive and not reactive, and we don't want to sit here and waste money to have a situation happen and we still have to call the city police to come and do the paperwork when they could already be there, that's just my own personal thoughts on that.
Something I want to clarify too is, does the, the school board funding is dependent on the state budget, so if the state doesn't fund the school board, does that mean in turn they can't fund these resource officers? I just want to know the level at which we need to be talking. It's great to talk to a school board, but if it's the state that controls the purse strings on that, we may need to talk at a higher level.
There's a mix of funds there, I'm sure some of it's county funds, I'm sure some of it's state funds.
Okay, just, I would like to, I would like to have that clarified, so when we have the retreat, just to have, I want to make sure we have all the information.
I'm not exactly sure of where that break line is, I'm sure that...
Maybe Megan can give it back.
Yeah, and that's, that's where, and maybe, maybe Megan could come with the chair or whatever, I will check their availability, I'm not sure, I'm more than happy to reach out to them.
And I do know in previous years, I have done some research, that other local area jurisdictions pay more than what we are receiving, and I also want to remind the board that the school is responsible for the kid from the bus stop to the school, so the school resource officer also is acting from the bus stop to the school, so if something happens at the bus stop, then that's considered happening at the school, so the school resource officer will be involved in it. Even if the bus stop is outside of city limits?
I would assume so, yes, sir. I just know they go from the bus stop to the school, because we get called to the bus stop often.
Yeah, that conversation definitely is...
Do you have anything else?
I just wanted to follow up one more on, do you know how many of the ten zones that they have for the ditch project, how many they've completed the surveys on? Danny, maybe, or Matt?
I know Matt, Matt may know. Some of them are smaller, I think we tried to start on one of the smaller, but we also are in conjunction with that working on some of the larger ones as well.
I think Mark just hit the nail on the head, we did start on the three smaller ones, just kind of getting them completed as quick as possible so we can get stuff initiated and sent to FEMA as quick as possible. The first three zones range anywhere from a half a mile to a mile and a half, they tackled all three of those zones last week, and they've started sending the reports over Cory earlier this week so we can get them to FEMA, so now they've tackled the three smaller zones, starting to hit some of the bigger ones, that will take a little bit more time.
And I reckon the public should know that these, what are they, geologists and engineers, Danny, is that what it consists of? Teams, these teams are out in the field and they're walking these ditches doing surveys, so if you happen to look out your kitchen window and see somebody in your backyard in the ditch, I'm assuming they're wearing reflective vests.
They all have, they all have orange caution, high visible uniforms on, but we've also given each team a stack of letters from the Public Works Department, so they do run into somebody that has any questions, that they can basically just give them a letter saying, hey, we're working here on behalf of the city of New Bern Public Works Department, if you've got any questions, call six-three-nine-seven-five-zero-one and we can address any questions they have.
That's awesome.
Okay, thanks, Matt, great job.
Yes, sir.
How about your old airport road, does that work?
It's coming on pretty good, I'm not gonna pull Matt back up because, but we are, we are in the process of getting easements on the portion of the old airport road from Taverna down to Carolina Colors, the work that is taking place from Colors into Evans Mill is moving along quickly and looking good. Is there anything else that I missed?
I think you hit it, that's perfect.
Thank you.
But since you're up here, what's going on with that bridge?
DOT. Are you talking about the, when it got stuck last week?
Yes.
My office is way on the other side of town, I actually did not know about it until Sabrina called me.
Sabrina watched.
And I told her it was a DOT issue, I did hear that there was a mechanism that got stuck, they had to go out there and make a repair to it, but we all know it's a DOT bridge and they did address it, but they had a malfunctioning part in the bridge system.
I thought you had something to do with it, Matt.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alderman Kinsey?
Well, I see Ms. Shields here tonight, we're glad to have you, Ms. Shields is the grant writer for the city, and we're looking to see big things from Ms. Shields, and I know she's gonna find that money, and we're excited about that, and thank you for coming out, On the behalf of the study that we had those guys that come down to talk about some of the drainage, have that form been completed yet? Mr. Stevens?
Which, which form are you talking about, sir?
The guys that come up, last meeting we had, that did the study. Jeff, you and I were discussing that earlier.
The pre-audit of the stormwater.
Has that been completed yet?
No, it has not, they, I got an email from them earlier in the week, they asked me if we had any additional comments before they finalized everything up, and we sent it back and said we're good, we're ready for them to finalize it, we're just waiting for it at this point.
Okay. So. Good.
We'll forward it to everybody as soon as we get it.
Thank you so very much. Anything else? That's it, sir.
Alderman.
I only have one thing, and that's in reference to a complaint that we received. Chief Summers, could you please come up? The gentleman that contacted the city in reference to the residence parking on the sidewalk over on Rainmaker Drive, are you aware of that?
Okay, I had to make sure I got this title right, we've actually been working with Major Jones on that, but we did, I did actually touch bases with the gentleman on Rainmaker, I have touched bases with Major Jones as well after we consulted the attorney, city attorney on the ordinance, and I've reached out to him, I've asked him if you've got a complaint or you see an issue, call the police department, they'll send an officer out to address it. The day that we reached out to Scott and we got some feedback from Scott on how to handle the situation, the police department did make a swing to the community, at that time it was daytime, most people were worked, they did not see any violations, so I've let the gentleman on Rainmaker know that he should just call the police department and report it if he's out walking and sees any issues.
Okay, the reason why I'm bringing it up again is because he just contacted me today and last evening, he says that there was eight vehicles parked on the driveway, and I know that it was said that for them to contact the police department, so I didn't know if they had contacted the police department about that incident.
Yeah, that's my knowledge.
Okay, so, all right, thank you.
I will try to make sure that we go by there.
Thank you.
I think the majority of the problem, it's in the evening when people are coming home from work, and he's probably trying to do his evening walk.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, Alderman Odom?
Just one thing, Mayor, I know we're always looking for a new revenue stream, I'd like to make a recommendation that we get with Colleen with City TV Three, and we set up a pay-per-view for a fire chief or a fire officer, Jasset and Alderman Kinsey, and we have a strong man contest or either an arm wrestling contest, and see if Alderman Kinsey still has anything left in the tank, but that's, that's all I can do.
I sent you that motion.
I wanted to get an update on what, did we, as a board, decide about the HGTV project? We just dropped it, wasn't concerned about it, or what? No one got back?
Yeah, we're...
I didn't receive any other emails or anything on it?
We're, we're moving, we're moving forward with Colleen trying to put together an application, it's a video and a couple pictures, I think, is all they're requesting, you know, I think we're gonna, we're gonna give it a whirl, we'll see, I know that we have a lot of areas that need improvement, but we'll, there's a lot of those places in this world, so we'll see where it goes.
I know that Kinsey has applied, I'm not sure the deadline either, do you remember?
I don't, I'm sorry, sir.
Okay.
I did respond, but I didn't hit respond on it. I did too, I responded, but I didn't do it.
February seventh, which is the day of our retreat, is the deadline.
Okay.
Well, we'll see who's gonna win the grant then.
Well, we do have the Main Street.
Yeah.
One other thing on our new business, I read somewhere that a good leader is a person that, in their discussion, they mentioned this, the topic three times, so, so, you know, last year, I mentioned that I wanted last year to be the year of the elevator, and Mr. Watford again kind of resonated that, and I think he said, is he eight?
Eight.
And so he talked a little bit about the elevator, and so I know the board would, would like to move forward at some point with whatever design, elevator, so could you give us an update on that?
Sure thing, actually, it's, it's great that you asked that, we, I have a meeting tomorrow with Tripp, who is our architect with MBF Architects, who is working on our City Hall Annex Plan, he's very excited to show it to me, and so I'll be meeting with him tomorrow afternoon. Upon doing so, it was the request of the board for that to be presented to y'all at the retreat, so that will be one of the items on the agenda, along with the presentations of your department heads, and it sounds like maybe now we have SROs, that I will try to see if that will be on our agenda as well.
Okay, anything else, anything else on our new business before the board tonight? Do we need a closed session tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'd love to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second. Motion and second to adjourn is there discussion. All favorite motions say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say, meeting is adjourned.